We're going to please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'd like to call up Jarvis Wright to please do the invocation for us. New St. Paul Church of God in Christ. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Good to see everybody post Irma already. We're grateful to God that we're still here. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity that you've allowed us to be in your presence. We thank you, God, that you have proven yourself to be a very present help in the time of trouble.
Yes.
And Father, we're even more grateful that even if some things get broken in our trouble, that you are restorer. So we ask right now, God, that you will continue to be who you are in our lives. And Father, we invoke and invite your presence into this meeting, that you would be the governor, that you would give us the wisdom, the knowledge, and the understanding to bring more glory to this land in the name of Jesus. And Father, we give you the praise for all those that are participants on the school board. And we ask right now, God, that you would bless us mightily. We give you the glory, the honor, and the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
At this time, the superintendent would like to do a presentation.
Good afternoon. I know we're all kind of trying to recover from the past week, Hurricane Irma. And we're kind of getting our wits about us, but the good thing is we're back in school. People are back to work. Power's back on, and everything's coming back to normal. But it is very important for us to, you know, talk about and compliment the people who really put a time in during the hurricane. And I'm actually going to talk about that some more in our end-of-the-meeting comments. But I especially want to point out one of our employees who kind of went above and beyond. Now, I just want to give you, before I call that person up here, I want to tell you what happened. It was early Sunday morn-- actually, early Monday morning, between Sunday night and Monday morning during the height of the hurricane. And I don't know about you, but I didn't get much sleep that night. And actually, I was at home. Travis Weaver was actually at the EOC at the time. And I lived at the EOC most of the time, but that night I was at home. But I was on the phone with him, and he called me at about 1:00 in the morning and said, "Our special needs shelter just lost power and lost a generator." And understand, we had a number of people there that were oxygen-dependent and basically had maybe two hours left of electricity before we actually had to transport them out into the height of the storm and take them somewhere to get help. So we were talking about it. He says, "I've got an employee, probably one employee in the entire district, who can come out and fix that generator." But, you know, we need to call him. So anyway, long story short, I got on the phone with that individual, and he was more than happy to come out in the storm. But the problem is, he couldn't get out. We actually had to send a 10,000-pound Hummer to his residence out on West River Road. And as it turned out, we had to cut trees down to get to him. And they loaded him up, brought him in, got the generator fixed at Kelly Smith in no time. I mean, basically saved lives, put his life at risk, saved many, many lives. And shortly after that, we found out the sheriff's office communication tower went down, and the generator went down, so he went there and fixed that, which meant now we could communicate. Again, many lives possibly saved by that. And then also that same night, in the height of the storm, went out to-- the city of Palatka called on him to go and fix a generator or a pump or something at the lift station of River Street. He went out there in the Hummer. The sheriff's office drove him out there. And the city could not get anybody out there to meet him. So he was out there waiting for about an hour. And I was told that the wind was so bad coming off the river, it was literally moving the Hummer. It was blowing the Hummer sideways. And my understanding was it actually blew the mirrors flat. I mean, that's how bad the wind was.
That is true.
So that's some tremendous wind. But again, he's out there risking life and limb because we asked him to. You know, he's an employee of ours, and he just went above and beyond. The next day or two, the rest of the week, he's like a rock star at EOC. It's like every time something went down, we called on him to come and fix something. I know he fixed the generator at Middleton Bernie. Travis, jump in here any time. Right. Brownie Pierce generator. And did some, maybe went in and did some diagnosis of some things that needed fixing. So, you know, you just cannot imagine the amount of trouble this person went through, risking his own life to save other lives. And we have so many people this past week that really went above and beyond, but not many of them actually risked their own life to save others. So with that said, I just want to read something. This certificate of appreciation, this is the certi-- certificate is awarded to Kevin Hall. Kevin, if you'll come up, please. "In appreciation for outstanding dedication and service above and beyond the call of duty during Hurricane Irma, presented September 19, 2017, by myself, the superintendent and chairman of the board, Jane Crawford." Let's give Kevin a big hand.
Oh, man. Awesome. Awesome. You're good, Travis. Yes. Wow.
Kevin had mentioned to me, Rick, that it seems like Travis Weaver would learn how to do some of this stuff.
We're going to do some cross-training.
Cross-training. Do you want to say a few words, Kevin, while you're up here? I'd love to aggravate you.
I know you do. Actually, people from the sheriff's department and from the fire department helped out quite a bit and everything you wanted to do. It was a good one effort. And I'm sorry your wife couldn't be here today. I would say she's in Texas today, but hopefully she's tuning in. Kevin's family, if y'all please stand up. Do you recognize them? Yeah.
Hey!
Thank you for coming.
Wow.
Thank you so much.
Congrats, Kevin.
Yes.
He just did what he does every day. I'm very plowed. That's wonderful.
I appreciate that so much. Thank you.
He can make anything work, you know?
Our next presentation will be from Mr. Jim Paget with Liv Putnam.
Take those away from me. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
I think you're supposed to give your address, and it is 200 Reed Street, Palatka. Mr. Buckles, I'm sure you know about where that is, close by. I'm just here today to give you really a year-end report on the activities, a summary, really, of what Liv Putnam was managed to accomplish last year and kind of give you a preview of what we're planning for the upcoming year. We're very excited about our next 2017, 2018 year. And I believe that Ms. Cormany has shared with you our reports prepared by our CPA for the conclusion of our year, which ended on 6/30/17. There's a statement of activities there. There's also a statement of financial position. And there is also a copy of our budget, which is captioned "proposed budget." But that budget was actually adopted the first week in July, on July the 5th. So that is the budget as it presently stands. I forgot to mention something. The storm has also had an effect on some of Liv Putnam's plans. We had scheduled for this Friday a luncheon, which each of you were invited to. You probably haven't gotten your invitations, as so many people have not. So we had to cancel the luncheon, and we're rescheduling it for a later date. And we're very fortunate that the speaker who we had planned on having is going to be able to attend sometime next month or the following month. So we will get that rescheduled, and we will send out new invitations. So sorry about that. As far as those documents are concerned, I'd be glad to try to answer any questions that you might have. If I can't, I can get you answers. I can say one thing right off the bat, for those of you who might check this very closely. Our beginning balance, and the budget indicates it's $58,341.22, is not what our ending balance was. So you wonder, "How could that happen?" Well, what happened is when we prepared the budget for consideration, it was prepared a few weeks, actually, before the first of the year. And we wrote some checks, I think actually, to the district for kids that we had enrolled, and that changed the beginning balance. I'm sure that that can be adjusted through an amendment. But if you look closely, there is that inconsistency. But what's not inaccurate is what we're hoping to do. In fact, some of which we have already done at the beginning of this school year. And that is to enroll 100 children in our full-year, full-day pre-K program. Last year, and we just got a-- we got kind of a slow start. As you know, we weren't actually up and running with our 501(c)(3) till halfway through the year, roughly. And we still generated over $30,000 of income for the Early Education Department last year. That equated to enrolling between 25 and 30 kids last year. This year, we have already enrolled 101 children. And we stopped at 101 because that's all we had budgeted. But we have a waiting list of the different schools, 20 or 25 more children, their families, who would like to enroll if the funds become available. So we're real excited about meeting the first prong, if you will, of our goal for this year. And that is, we've gotten these kids enrolled. And we will, we will be able to fund it. I can assure you of that. That is a summary, really, of what our overall plan is for this year. But our five-year plan, I say five-year plan. Maybe it would be six, maybe it would be four. But something, you know, in that area is to get to a point, and I think I may have mentioned this to you briefly at a prior meeting, but get to a point where we could provide every needy child in Putnam County with the full-day, full-year program. That's our longer-term goal, if you will. And we've been very fortunate. There's some folks in Tallahassee that have, you know, really jumped in behind our movement. I call it a movement, our goal, our mission. And they've been giving us, you know, some direction and some good ideas as to how we might form an endowment where our goal, if met, would be self-sustaining. Because obviously, we're not going to be able to enroll every needy child in Putnam County every year without some form of an endowment or ongoing substantial reinvestment, if you will, from either the state or from private sources. So that is, that's a goal that we're working on. And we're making some strides, some preparations. There are certain things that we're told that we absolutely must do before we go to people who would have the financial ability to provide that endowment. If we could demonstrate not only the need, but the fact that we are doing everything we can locally to meet that goal, but we just need help. And if we're able to do that, and I think we will be able to do it, then we might be able to achieve something that, you know, has been a dream, I think, of a lot of people. And I do, you know, believe so passionately that it will make a difference. So anyway, that's what we did last year. That's what we're working on doing this year. And that's a glimpse of what we are planning on doing in the next few years. I may be coming back to you in the near future. One of the things, excuse me, that we're considering is becoming a totally independent charitable organization, foundation, if you will. Our mission would not change. Our goals would not change. But the structure of the foundation might change slightly. Basically, what we're looking at is the advisability of transitioning from a DSO, which we are now, to a totally independent organization. It certainly has nothing to do with our working relationship with the board or the administration. But from time to time, we will hear, excuse me, I seem to be losing my voice. But from time to time, we will hear from naysayers that, "Well, you're not really independent." Now, these are people that probably wouldn't support us to begin with. But they will say, "You're not really independent. You're part of the same old school system that's bloody, bloody, bloody. They control you." And they then say, "They pick your directors, and they can hire and fire your directors if they want to." And of course, we've never had any difficulty with that. But, you know, there may be a fundraising advantage, if you will, to being able to tell people, for what it's worth, that we're totally independent. We've got a wonderful working relationship, and I'm sure it's going to continue. But if there's anything out there that will give us just a little bit more of an opportunity to convince somebody to invest in what we're doing, you know, I think we ought to look seriously at doing it. So I may be coming back to you on that issue.
Aren't, aren't a great proportion of school districts in the state of Florida, don't they have independent foundations, anyway?
I think about 50/50. Nikki, you might remember, but seems like CLFES, they shared some information with us. And I think roughly half of the foundations in the state are independent.
It will, I think it will enhance the opportunity to try to raise funds to serve the needs of these kids. So I'm certainly thinking it would be a wonderful thing.
And maybe the only thing it would accomplish, as far as those naysayers are concerned, is when they say that, we can say, "No, that's wrong."
Yeah.
You know, you don't know what you're talking about next, you know? But anyway, I'd be glad to entertain any questions that anyone might have, if you have any.
I was under the impression once that it was a matching fund. Like if you raised X number of dollars, then--
Well, there is one-- Yes, ma'am. There is one source of revenue, if you will, that we get that is a matching fund. And that's through the consortium of local education foundations, CLEF, which is, we're a member of. And we have to raise so much money from the private sector. And then we get a match through CLEF. And it's actually state money that is routed to CLEF for that purpose. And there's a cap on it. We, last year, were fortunate. We were able to get the maximum amount that we could qualify for. And the maximum, the amount per district is determined by your FTE count. So I just spoke to CLEF today, and we'll be picking up our check for the maximum amount on the 4th of October. So--
Thank you, Jim.
Does anybody want to know who won the Gator Tennessee game by any chance? Anyway, thank you for having me, and we'll be back in touch with you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation to Jenkins Middle School from the Home Depot grant. If someone's here for that. If not, maybe they can come next meeting.
Okay. We'll get them next meeting.
Yeah.
Well, it has, we've half had a storm.
That's true. Home Depot might be a little preoccupied. And then the last presentation's by Mr. Vito Russo in regards to the Campbell Building.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for having me. I appreciate your time. Before I start on my stuff, Jim Paget's program is acquisitively important to this community and should be supported at all costs. I've been up here about a half dozen times. Don't know much about me, but I grew up in the Midwest. I've been here about 15 years. I grew up in the Midwest. My parents were blue-collar people. My mentors were blue-collar. I work with my hands. They worked with their hands. It gives me the ability to restore my own historic house here in the South Side. I'm the first one who went to college. I have three degrees. I have undergraduate degree in the science field. I have an advanced engineering degree, and I have an MBA. This idea, this cultural arts center vision, this idea will work in our community, I'm telling you. So-- the other uses that we've had that have been suggested for this building, the assisted living facility, the drug treatment center, the synergy billing. These are four uses of that building. And I can tell you, the hotelier that's making, that might be making inquiry, I'm not really certain what's happened with the hotelier. But the hotelier idea is going to pale in comparison to what this can do for our community. So let me get right into it. And I have this new machine here.
And Mr. Russo, I think normally how we set it up is a 10-minute presentation, 10 minutes for questions and responses.
Yeah.
And then if you had any follow-up.
Okay. All right. Okay. Well, let's get moving then.
Okay.
I'm not sure if you can see that. But, okay, so there's going to be an economic impact to this, to this cultural arts center. This is a, if you look at that, I can't see it on my screen. I can't see that very well. The, Americans for the Arts did a very comprehensive nationwide study on the impact of nonprofit art cultural centers. And as it became plainly obvious, and this is for Florida, that it generally is an economic driver. It creates jobs. It boosts household incomes, and it contributes to the local tax base. So-- I've lost my train of thought. So the point is that, I think a perfect example of how the arts is an economic driver would be thinking of the riverfront property that we had that is now the Hampton Inn. So you have the Hampton Inn, and it contributes to the tax base. But it does, but it's not an economic driver. So if the community had turned to the arts and used that riverfront property as an example, as an amphitheater, like St. Augustine's. Now, that's a very good example of how the arts is an economic driver, because that's going to draw people in from the whole region. And when they get into our community, come into town, they're going to, they're going to have dinner. They're going to hang out at the bars. They're going to be walking the business district. They might even spend the night. So that's a clear example of how the arts is an economic driver. And this cultural arts center idea is no different. So, so you have that economic impact, and then you have a very important cultural impact. Because on the, I'm a very, I have conviction that if we're going to change the condition of our community, we're going to have to affect its culture. And that's, we can do that through the educate, through education, and we can also do that through the arts. It's been well-established that's the case. I mean, it's going to basically, you know, it does break, it does establish relationships between people. Breaks down barriers. It changes people's opinion. And very interestingly enough, that the university, a university study that low-income citizens with access to cultural resources are, in fact, healthier, better educated, and safer communities than those communities that don't have these cultural resources. So it's another cultural impact that is beneficial to the community. So I think that this cultural arts center idea would go a long way to break down the self-imposed segregation that we have in our community. So one of the important things about this idea is that it will be financially self-sufficient. Now, I got the utility bills for that building for the year 2014, and it averaged out to be $4,200 a month. But one, there's going to be about five or six major programs in this cultural arts center. And the main revenue driver is going to be this program called Art Space Loft. The whole second floor, there's 14 rooms up there. That would be converted to affordable living slash, living space slash studio art space. And that would generate a minimum of $7,000 a month. And could easily generate $10,000 if that was required to make that building self-sufficient. But of course, that's not the only revenue stream that we would have. There would be other revenue streams that would also contribute. So I think that's a very important component of this idea. So let me get into the, let me get into the major programs that are going to be in this cultural arts center. So let me start off with this Art Space Loft. So there's 14 rooms up there easily, and there could easily be 16. And this is going to generate, like I said, between $7,000 and $10,000 a month. And that would cover all operating expenses plus some to run this building. So there's going to be all kinds of tenants in there, all types of artists in there. And I just want to give you a little sample of them. So you're going to have painters up in that building. You're going to have sculptors in that building. You're going to have artists using silk screen techniques. You're going to have ceramic artists up there. You'll have photographers up there. It will be the epicenter of creativity in this community. One of the requirements for these local artists that are going to be in this building, one of the requirements they're going to have is they're going to have to contribute 10 hours, they're going to donate 10 hours of their time per month to this, to the programs that are in this building. So as an example, they would be giving our community free art lessons, as an example. They would help with the maintenance of the building. They would help with, well, any of the other programs that might be involved in this building. So that's a very important component of the Art Space Loft. So now, this is nothing new. Other communities have done this. We're just bringing out, we're going to bring to our community what has already been proven to work. So there is a, just a boatload of communities throughout this whole country that have turned to this idea to help contribute to the revitalization of their communities, their local economies. So this one, this one here is more of an industrial area, this Art Space Loft. But this one here is more like what we would have in the Campbell Building. So aside from the Art Space Loft program, so obviously, the first floor would have a couple of art galleries, would have a couple of meeting rooms of different sizes. So I just want to give you a sample of what other communities have done. So, I mean, hallways will be full of art. There'll be multiple art galleries down there that are going to be exhibiting the artists that are on the second floor, plus any traveling artists. I don't want to go too fast here. I mean, these are some beautiful facilities. Now, we're going to have the master gardeners involved in this, and they'll be landscaping this building inside and out. So our building will be full of art and full of plants. And I'm going to get to, get to that landscaping part here in a little bit. So I think I just messed this up. Okay, so these are, these are the different types of art galleries that are going to be down there. These are the meeting rooms. They're going to be different sizes, small ones, large ones, medium-sized ones. This would be for civic organizations that come into the, into the building. Civic religious organizations, meetings, receptions, lectures. The, the building's going to have the cafeteria up and running again. So these, these will be catered if necessary. This will also generate a revenue stream. One of the neatest things about this idea is this courtyard performing arts. We're going to take the center courtyard, and we're going to convert it into a, we'll have a stage on the one end. And then we'll have tables out there. We'll have it landscaped. And it, of course, it's going to be adjacent to the old cafeteria. So we're going to contract out for catering services at the old cafeteria. So there are going to be beer and wine sales sold-- catering services at the old cafeteria. So there are going to be beer and wine sales sold here. This is going to be an extremely popular venue in the community, I assure you. So this is what other communities have done. Converting these courtyards into, uh, music venues. So this is the important, this is the important outreach programs for the community. Now, these outreach programs are going to be visual and performing arts. The beautiful idea about this is that we're going to hook up with the Flow Arts. And Flow Arts is going to give internships to their college students and the college students are going to be participating as teachers in our outreach programs. So it doesn't cost, it doesn't cost the Cultural Arts Center anything. The students at the State College are going to be the teachers at, in these programs. It's, it's a, it's a win-win idea. It's a beautiful idea. Everybody's going to make out. So, so as an example, this, these outreach programs are going to be Monday through Friday, four o'clock to six o'clock, right after school's over. And when they come into the building, as we attract them into the performing arts and the visual arts, we're not going to leave it at just that. We're going to incorporate some academics and we're going to try to instill the values of community service and the values of education, uh, into the kids. So, so as an example, they'll come in on Mondays. And so the first half an hour or so, we will try to build their vocabulary and then they'll go dance. And on Tuesdays they'll come in, we'll help them with their mathematics, then they'll go dance. On, uh, Wednesdays they might come in and we might do life skill building. So as example, the master gardeners would come in and they would, and the kids would help them maintain the landscaping as an example for life, uh, skills, life building skills. On Thursday, on Thursdays, they're going to do chores, light chores. Because we want the kids to take ownership of the building. And if, and if they're taking care of the building, they're going to have a sense of ownership. It's their building and that's what we want to convey to them. So on Fridays, it's a fun day. So, so that's one of the outreach programs. Or that's the general structure of all the outreach programs, whether they're visual or performing arts. So we would teach them all types of, all types of dance. I mean, it would be, uh, modern dance and tap dance and ballet dance. But interestingly enough, we could teach them traditional Japanese dance, if you can believe it. We have somebody in Interlock and it actually is a teacher of this Japanese traditional dance and they've already expressed an interest in being involved. And then I work with, uh, some West, West African, uh, professionals. And they tell me that Gainesville has a program where they're teaching atua. And that, and that is the traditional, uh, West African dance. So we would be teaching, uh, these more traditional dances, which I find fascinating. So, it's going to be a wide spectrum of, of a dance genre that's going to be in this dance space program. And of course, we're not going to leave it to just the kids. There's going to be adult dance classes. Right here, we've got the tango going on. So I think that that would be good for the entire community. We need to get as much exercise as we can manage. So, so, okay, so now it's going to next, another major program, music space. So it's, it's been well documented, well established that music instruction is very fundamental to childhood development. And these programs are going to help compensate for the budget cuts that the, the school district has had to make in these, uh, art programs. So we could help compensate for the budget cuts that are going on. So, so these, um, these, uh, these music programs, this is really important for, uh, uh, childhood development. I mean, I've got Northwestern University Studies, uh, University of Toronto, Boston Children's. All these, uh, studies have one key finding, and that is that the music education is insanely beneficial to childhood development. And that it, uh, it benefits brain function, improved language and speech processing skills, uh, which dominoes into better reading and speech. And it would help, help our community, help, uh, mitigate that achievement gap that this community desperately needs. So, um, I thought this was really interesting. Wouldn't cost too much. Xylophones. I can only pray for the teacher who teaches that class. So, so we wouldn't leave it to the performing arts. We would go into the visual arts as well. And we would start off young. Now, I was, I'm going to talk to Jim Paget and see how we can, uh, create some synergy between the lift, the lift putman, uh, program and what we would try to do with pre-kindergarten kids and this visual art, uh, program that I'd like to see established. So we'd get the kids over there pretty young. And of course, they would, um, be, as they get older, get more sophisticated, painting. And then we're not going to limit it to, um, simply drawing and drawing, um, drawing and painting. I mean, we would eventually go into graphic arts. So, so as I mentioned earlier, we got life skills. Life skills is a way of trying to empower the kids, uh, a way of boosting their confidence, um, their self-reliance. And so we wouldn't want to neglect that. So this was a very interesting point that I came across this study that said that dropout rates actually drop if you teach the kids life skills. And what kind of life skills we would be teaching them? Two examples would be, uh, I mentioned earlier, we would hook them up with the master gardeners and they would learn horticulture and help maintain the building as well as doing those light chores. But we, we would bring the bike shop in and they would teach them how to ma- maintain bicycles, uh, which is something that is very important to most kids. Uh, so that would be an example of the life skills that we'd be teaching them at this Cultural Arts Center. So, uh, let me, let you, yes. Okay, so let me wrap it up and just show you an example of what other communities have done. So it's all over the country, big cities, little towns. It doesn't make any difference. They're all over. This is Memphis, Tennessee. They took that and created that. So they turned to the arts and they, and they basically made, they established an economic driver that they did. Plus they boosted the, the culture of the community. That's Elgin, Illinois, a little small town. That's Art Space Loft right there. There's Buffalo, New York. They took a blighted area and created that. That's, uh, Council Bluff, Iowa. Another small town. So, there's the presentation. So, basically what other communities have done, we can do it here. And I tell you, I can tell you right now that future generations would look back on our vision and our efforts and they would be forever grateful. Because this is one fantastic idea. So, I'm free for a few questions. Yes.
I do understand how it could be, uh, self-contributing. It wouldn't cost money. It might even make some money. But where does the money come from to fix the building in the first place?
Yes, of course. See, there's, there's major obstacles that we have to overcome. Ownership of the building is one. Where are we going to get the matching funds? Now, as I mentioned the last time I was here, there's the, uh, the, the state's Division of Cultural Affairs Program, uh, Grant Manager conveyed the idea that it would be a benchmark project for the state to convert that to a cultural arts center. But that's a half million dollar grant and that program is normally a two-to-one match, but we've, but it would reduce for, because of the cult, because of the historic nature of the building and the fact that we're an underserved community, they would reduce that to one-to-one. So where are we going to come up with that money? So the way, my first thought is that it's going to take 350, $400,000 of matching money for a 700,000, $800,000 investment. So I'm working on it. I'm working on it. I'm working with, uh, with, um, the, uh, county commissioner. I'm trying to come up with a solution. So I don't have a solution for you yet, but, uh, in this country, there is a, there's a saying, where there's a will, there's a way. And I'm telling you, I don't see how any community leader cannot be a buy-in and be a stakeholder for this idea and help make it happen. Because, because it's been, it's been a one-person vision at the moment. And I got to tell you, I'm getting tired because I work 40 hours a week. I'm redoing my, I'm restoring my own house. And, uh, for this to manifest, it's going to take a community effort. It's going to take all the community leaders, school board members, the city officials, county officials, uh, the business leaders. It's going to take everyone on board to make it happen. So where that 350 and 400,000 dollars comes from? I can't say right now, but I am researching it and I am making efforts to locate it. I mean, I even contacted the Washington Post journalist who wrote the article about us, uh, a few weeks back. I've even contacted that person saying that we could use a little assistance here. And I haven't heard back from him yet, but I'll hunt him down.
Vito, I did have an opportunity to meet with one of our commissioners, Chip Lible, about this. And your vision is, is very, very much to be commended. I think it is a work in progress. Like you say, where there's a will, there's a way, but you've opened up some doors here that, uh, that I think there's room for endowments and things down the road if we can find a way to to work together. I don't know. It's, it's just something we've got to work more on. And the county, I think their attitude is, is very supportive and the city as well. So, it's got a, it's got a, we've got the reality of, of dollars and time.
I, I do realize the building is a burden on the, on the school district. I do realize that. So, uh, I, I would, my argument to that is that we, we just need a bit of time. And I know that there's another issue coming up. But we need a bit of time to, to solve these obstacles that we have, the money obstacle and the ownership obstacle. That is something that's still being worked on and I'm working on it with the county commissioner, Chip Lible, about it. And I think that we can come up with a, a solution because I think that, um, I think that this is worth the, worth any of the efforts that we might put out to solve it. It could be solved. I mean, we're Americans. You know, we put a person on the moon in ten years when we didn't even have the technology. We had to develop the technology to put that person on the moon. I mean, it's, we are can-do people. And this community can do that because other communities have done it. So I'm telling you, I've talked to the executive directors of other cultural centers throughout this country. And when I show them that building, they all are jealous. They are jealous because that building is flat-out beautiful. And they would love to have that building and do what they do.
And so would you oversee all of this? Or, and you mentioned a we, uh, is that a committee of people that have been working with you to do some of the things that you've done?
Uh, Sandra, I wish there was a committee, but no, there's not. I've been driving, I'm the, uh, the, the driving force behind this. I have been doing a lot of research on the business plan and doing research on the grant writing. Now, one of the main, uh, phases of this grant writing is that we're going to need, we're going to need some architects. So I contacted the University of Florida School of Architecture and I spoke to the, uh, the dean over there. And I asked them, I told them what's going on and they said that the resource, they don't have the resources to do what we need to do. But that, that dean sent me over to Florida, a 501(c)(3) organization in Gainesville. It's, uh, called the Florida, uh, Community Design Center. The Florida Community Design Center. They, they, what they do is exactly what we want. And the executive director for that Florida, uh, Community Design Center, he knows the building. He knows Campbell Building. He says, this is what we do. And he was very excited about it. So he asked me for a letter. He asked me for a letter, uh, giving, so he could show the board, his board, uh, give them context of what this, this project would entail. And, uh, so I wrote that out. I asked him to edit it and send it back to me and I'd, you know, I'd give the second draft and send it to him. But he says, no, it was fine as it was. And he took it to his board last Thursday. Uh, I'm not sure how the storm interfered, uh, affected that. But he, he took it to the board last Thursday and he's supposed to be getting back with me on how they responded to it because they have obviously a priority list and where this project would fall, where this project would fall in that priority list, I'm not really sure. But it was very encouraging, I will say that. So that's one phase of the grant writing. And we would let the Florida Design Center, we would let them write the grant. Because that's what they, that's what they do. They've got a lot of experience at that. And we have a one-shot, we have one shot at this grant to make this happen and we're not going to give the grant writing to some amateur. I could tell you that. So, so I'm just the driving force behind it, but I've been pretty thorough so far.
Okay.
But I could use your help.
Okay, and so to, to, to get this, the ball rolling even, even faster than what it is, you would want the board to
Actually, I want the board to take it.
Hear the building.
Yes. I, the way I see it is that the, uh, the, the building's going to be given to a 501(c)(3) or a public, uh, entity of some sort. But it's an investment. And now I do realize, I do realize that the, the city has, they have to boost their tax base because I know that they are tight. I tell you, they have a very, very tight budget. I do realize that. But my argument is that if we sell it to a private entity and it does not become a cultural arts center, that's going after short-term money. Because sure, it'll go into tax rolls and, and it'll supply X amount of tax revenue to the city. But it will pale in comparison to what the economic driver of this building as a cultural arts center would be. And what value is it? What value do we put on the cultural impact of it? So I think I can make a cogent argument that in the long run, as a cultural arts center, it's more of an economic driver than a private entity having that building and having, as an example, a medical building company. I think that the, 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 the economic driver is much, much greater. Much greater. So, um, I'm sensitive to the argument, but, uh, like I said, I think that it's, I, I make decisions for the long term. And so, to me, this is the best long-term decision. This is, this is the exact use for that building for this community, in my opinion. It's a beautiful idea and an effective idea. It's an effective idea. I mean, it's really going to have a cultural impact on us. And, and we, we know that that's, uh, part of the solution. This is a, this is a fundamental building block of revitalization for this community, I'm telling you. So.
Vito, thank you for putting, uh, that together. Very impressive presentation. Maybe follow up when you find out more from Gainesville, maybe come back.
Oh, yes, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, so, uh, I'll try not to bother you with that good information. So I'll, I'll follow up with the Design Center in Gainesville. And, uh, I'll keep developing that, uh, business plan and I'll keep working with, uh, the county commissioner and come up with this two solutions for ownership of the building and, uh, our share of the matching funds. Because I tell you what, I mean, I'm such a can-do person. I thought, why can't we get the funds directly from the community? Why can't, I mean, because we want the building to be owned, we want ownership. We want the community to take ownership of the building. So why can't we have a GoFundMe page and have all the community leaders, the, the religious leaders, the civic leaders, the, uh, the, the, the business leaders from the Chamber of Commerce? Why can't we have a public fund drive to generate the monies that, that, that would contribute? If it wasn't for the whole 350 or 400, why couldn't we get a, whatever fraction that we could, uh, raise directly from the public, whether it's a $5 donation or a $500 donation? I don't see why that can't be part of our solution. So, thank, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Vito.
Thank you. Um, there's been no public comments turned in. So we will move on to the consent agenda. Board members, we are pulling, um, item G1 from consideration that's been removed. Are there any other items that need to be, um, pulled from the consent agenda?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Gilliard?
I'm good. Mine, mine is taken care of.
Good.
I make a motion, we adopt the consent agenda minus G1.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for zero. Let's go to emergency items. The first item is an amendment to the warehouse lease. I believe I did speak to Dr. Sartzy, the company that owned our leasing, um, building that we're leasing has been bought by a new company. And Board of Mr. Attorney, is there any issues with that or is there?
No, my understanding is that it's just, uh, under dual ownership, now it's under one owner.
Okay.
And they're currently not getting monthly payments. So that's why it was submitted as an emergency item.
They're not getting monthly payments?
They are not receiving monthly payments from us because they don't have a lease.
Oh.
Good.
So we're going to get a next one?
Do you have any plans to?
They're, they're working with us right now, but we'd like to get there.
Yeah, I guess they'd like to get paid.
Do we have any plans to store that stuff somewhere else?
Not currently, no ma'am.
And this is a year lease, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
It's 46,200. We've spent 231,000 dollars. We've spent two hundred thirty-one thousand dollars so far. Now we go another five years, you're looking at a million dollars.
Right.
We have, we could build a nice building for that.
We've done that a lot. Mr. Chastain, you wanna talk about that? Okay.
Well, actually, we had, uh, years ago, there was talk about, you know, changing the old wings on the old Browning Pierce Campus One in East Polack and trying to develop that, but I don't know if it's compatible, compatible with comp plan. I mean, there's a lot of other issues you probably have to face now, but Kathy's right, at some point, that needs to be, I'm sure it's on the list of things to do, but I don't, I don't know if that's, this is probably cheaper than the interest you, you'd have a million, you know, a couple million.
We'll start, we'll start that conversation again. We were actually looking at the, uh, old Browning Pierce, uh, a few months back, so, you know, that's, that is an idea that we've kinda gone back and forth with.
We could do a little feasibility study and, you know, come back and give you more information about that.
Got a hold of two motor, for sure.
Yeah.
All right. Any more discussion?
I make a motion that we approve emergency item one.
Second.
Amendment to warehouse lease.
There's been a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries for zero. Second item, annual financial report for fiscal year ending, um, June thirtieth, twenty-seventeen.
Shannon's here, if you have any questions about that? I know that was a-
Who has time to, had time to read it, wasn't that like two hundred and forty pages?
Yes.
I think there was an issue about the storm, there was a delay in that. If you have any questions, Shannon, be happy to-
Why does it have to be emergency? It's time-sensitive, we have to get it up to TELASSI? Is that why it has to be emergency? Okay.
Okay, so.
I make a motion, we approve.
Well, it's a good thing the storm came, though.
I think they didn't get it on the agenda, because the storm, or you put it on the actual board docs.
No, it should've been September third's meeting, if it was June the eleventh.
Oh, yeah, 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 you're right.
Usually what we do is we'll send it in and say to be approved at the next board meeting.
Okay, gotcha.
I see, okay. Okay.
I make a motion, approve.
Second.
So there's been a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for zero, out of emergency. There's no unfinished business, no new business reports.
Reports.
Ms. Gilley, would you like to begin?
I don't have anything to report, other than to just give kudos to all of those, even the city, the sheriff, and all that helped, uh, to man our centers. Um, I live down from Browning Pierce Elementary, and I saw some people there as late as Sunday evening, still staying. And, and I read the article regarding what, uh, Principal Ashley McCool did regarding the library and the students coming into the cool air, and so, uh, we're just fortunate to live in a community where people care about each other and reach out and help. And then to see the article with the family helping to, to cut, you know, logs and things, trees that had actually fallen. We didn't have a nun cutting, but we had a whole lot of other people sharing and doing things, and it's just great to be a part of this community.
Mr. Buckles?
I just can't say enough about, uh, Dr. Serancy and his staff of administrators and maintenance workers that have held the schools together through this storm. You know, we've, we've all served time over the years in these facilities and shelters, and it's a hard time to be away from your family and not know if your home is still there. So Rick, if you would pass it on to them, I know you'll make it up to them somehow, but that's a, it's a tough, tough go, when you're superintendent, you have to go in there and make the call, and EEOC, they can override you at any time on your facilities, because they, they, they have the, the law behind them to do that. It's a quite a deal, so, uh, thanks, and thank God, I guess we didn't lose any children in this.
Amen.
Thanks.
That's it.
Ms. Jorgensen?
Um, I would like to again request a workshop, so that we could chew the fat. Teamwork, team build, like we did in Gainesville, an informal conversation between the board members and the superintendent. And this started from our desire, speaking up here, not to have anything that financially affects our employees or retirees on the consent agenda. And just, I mean, that, it might last five minutes, but I would like to request that as, and I'd also like to, I, I met with the head of Head Start and, um, BPK, which comes through Episcopal Services. And I'm, I'm still confused about it all, but they're willing to come and give us a workshop and tell us about their services and what they have to offer and who's eligible and all that stuff. So I was wondering if we could schedule a workshop for that.
Would you want that, uh, prior to the next board meeting?
Sure, two o'clock.
The October third, is that good with the board members? Two o'clock?
Um, I do have to make a small report about insurance and, um, possible workshop that same day.
All right, so I'll have it the next one, there, three and fourteen is the seventeenth.
I don't know if we could-
We'll have it on the seventeenth.
Well, I don't, I'll do that in my report, I don't, it needs to get the, you know, the board consensus on it, so.
Just let us know when you wanna schedule the workshops, we'll be glad.
Yeah, well, we'll talk about it when you get to you.
Yeah.
That's fine, I'm done, that's all I had to say.
Okay, um, there was a, another insurance meeting, um, and so I'm the representative that sit in that, I had to leave a little early, so when I called to check in to see what was going, um, the, this gentleman who United Healthcare wants to hire as part of a, um, preventative insurance to, uh, contract, we don't pay for it, but he wanted to meet with us as a board, um, and he was available October third at two o'clock, 'cause I said, well, the meeting's today, if you want me to go ahead, and it was just something to, um, present to the board, the insurance committee has met with him two times, or no, one time, sorry. And so he wanted to come to the board and, and kinda fill us in and what he wants to offer as far as the services through United. So I said, I will definitely ask the board. It would be October third at two o'clock, if that would be, um, the board's desire.
Sounds good.
Okay, so that would be the third at two o'clock, and then the seventeenth, we could maybe ask Ms. Cormany to, um, the pre-K. Okay. All right, well, I'll, I'll just reiterate that, and I'll have him contact you, Ms. Cormany is about the third in the boardroom at two o'clock. I just wanna go ahead and get the schedule. Um, hurricane, yeah, that's a major thing, I did want to, so many people, I did, I get through Feeding Northeast Florida calls, hey, we wanna send this, we wanna send this, so I wanna thank, um, Horace and Josh at the warehouse, I said, they wanna bring a lot of water, fourteen pallets of water, nobody's working, can you help me? And they actually went in and opened, so I appreciate all your hard work. And that's exactly what, we have so many people here that just stop what they're doing and help other people in the community. Along those lines, Thursday and Wednesday, they're sending, um, two trucks, semi-loads of a lot of things, household goods, canned goods, MREs, water. I've already reached out to the schools in the south, and that's where they're bringing it for people who still don't have power, so please spread the word at ten o'clock Thursday and Wednesday. Scott, I did ask them to put it in the paper tomorrow, so you should get that covered. Um, again, it's just Feeding Northeast Florida, we have a partnership, and they wanted to reach out, which is awesome. So we do, normally do a mobile food pantry in Crescent City once a month, but since I said the needs were so great.
And Wallaka.
Yeah, and I wish we could get a location closer to Wallaka, that would be, yeah, a lot of people without power, so. Again, send anybody, there's no stipulations, just people in need, even if you're preparing for the possible other storms, so.
And you have people to help you to distribute it?
I always need extra, so if you wanna contact me, uh, we have a nice little team, but yeah, it's a lot of-
Okay, if you need help, I'll, I'll volunteer.
Okay, great, I'll let you get, get the details. So that is Thursday and next Wednesday, Crescent City Women's Civic Center at seven oh four Huntington Road. Okay. Okay. Board, Board Attorney?
Everything is going well in the legal department, I'm happy to report.
And I just wanna reinforce, so many employees and people around the community during this last week, um, have taken part, I mean, from people that worked at the shelters, our food service department, our maintenance guys, um, you know, of course, our administrative staff, school-based administrators and county-level administrators. Uh, we actually met with them prior to the storm, had a meeting here at night, and kinda organized our efforts for the storm, and had our schedules and everything, so they, they hit the ground running. And then tomorrow afternoon, we plan on meeting with them again to debrief, to see what we can do, what we've learned through all this and what we can do to make it even better. So this has been a great learning experience, and we were right up till Saturday, our last school was powered up. Every, every single school lost power, a lot of food was lost during that process and some damage, we were very fortunate, but Crescent City High was powered up Saturday, and, um, they had, you know, extensive damage to power lines, so it took a little bit longer there. And, um, yesterday, uh, Sunday, we closed out the special needs shelter at Kelly Smith, and we were prepared to open up school with a special needs shelter in the school, 'cause we were bound and determined, we were gonna start school, one way or the other. So I commend everybody that, you know, stepped up and helped us out. Kevin was just one example, but we have many, many people that did that, so, very proud. And finally, wanna say this, uh, after living at the EOC for a week, uh, I found out how fortunate we are to have such a community of, um, you know, leaders, community leaders that all came together, we met constantly, and, uh, it was, if anything good came out of the storm, we found out that, uh, we have a lot of people that can work together in times of need, so we're all in good hands.
Who owns the Hummer?
Sheriff's office.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I bet they never thought that they would be able to use it in such a way, you know? That's great.
I'm sure they'll let you borrow it if you need it.
No, don't need it, don't need it.
They caught a lot of, they caught a lot of grief when they had it years ago.
Yeah.
And look what it did.
And I will, uh, the meeting tomorrow, if we, if the board, I mean, we hear people from the community, did you want any feedback, or do you want us to come as far as that goes, or just email you, hey?
You can email us, we, we've asked administrators to email us, and we're just gathering information and-
Okay, great.
Processing it, so, uh, yeah.
Yeah, so anybody that has any feedback that you hear from the community, we could definitely, every time we learn, we get a little better, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
So that's why I said, I said, all the water, hang on to it, because when you need it, you have to have it now, not tomorrow, now.
Actually, I got a call from someone, a teacher at Browning Pierce, had a relative in North Carolina.
Yeah, yeah.
They sent a trailer, and did you get it?
Yes, Saturday, we gave it out to the community, it was awesome. We had a big, uh, semi-truck of food and then people working on all kinds of destroyed houses and working on trees, it was a great, um, amazing community event.
Well, I went to Crescent City one day during the, after the storm, and, and saw, um, the administrative staff at Miller Middle was standing in the street handing out water to all the community people going by.
Yeah, that's what I-
And that was a great community outreach, and that was just-
And Horace and Josh, that was us, and please take this water, 'cause these people don't have power, they need water, and we just said, give it out, whoever needs it, just, you know, we don't want it to go to waste, it was donated to us, so that's an amazing thing.
Yeah, very proud of Putnam County.
Yeah, me too, it's exciting.
Definitely.
Is there anything else? If not, this meeting's a draw.
Thank you.